Good afternoon.
Good evening.
We have a couple of battles under D-Vig to start with. The first and the biggest item tonight is our settlement invoices for our old drip project, which we know only the company's employees, these private services, seven, eight years old. But anyway, this was a huge program and we've known, we've known that we would owe some borrow, just didn't know exactly how much. We have budgeted for this, but the problem right now, we received the invoices finally, but we have not yet received our final payment from the state, from the FEMA, from the flood five years ago. So, we had that in the budget as a revenue and we had the payment of the E-Vig, we were hoping to get the revenue in before the expenses got to happen. So anyway, but the good news is we did get our money back from FEMA for last year, so the lodging tax fund has been made whole. And I think there's, some of this information I handed out to you, six hundred and seventy thousand, I believe that's what your agenda package, your look representative, and they were filled with this, and their spreadsheet along with it. So, about six hundred, not quite six hundred and eighteen thousand by now on lodging tax. So, the request we're making is to go ahead and pay these invoices out of my lodging back fund, and then when we get the FEMA and the state EMA money back, use that money to just directly rework.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I know we talked once before, you were going to float the idea of waiting until that money got reimbursed, but we got our reimbursement. Did you do that?
Waiting for...
At the last meeting, I can't remember if we talked about it, me and you might have had a conversation after the meeting about this FEMA money that we were owed, and then we'd have to turn around and pay the states on them, about talking to them about, hey, how quickly does this invoice need to be paid?
Right.
We're sitting on, you said what, six or seven years, waiting for this invoice? Is that what you said?
Yes.
We don't want, we don't want to hold it six or seven years, we just want to hold it until we get some federal reimbursement back.
Yeah.
If nobody's going to scream and holler at us.
Well, I wonder are you expecting the three eight and fifteen floods to pay back? A year ago. I mean, I'm not trying to give you a smart answer, but that's any day now. I mean, we, I hadn't really expected to have it by now. And we're, and the state is helping us. The problem is, that, that whole disaster recovery was delayed because of one bridge project. And we had some, I won't go into all the issues we had with that, but anyway, we finally got that bridge replaced, and by that time, everything had to be sent, they no longer had a field office set up, you know, in the state, so they, and I'm not sure if I'm using that terminology exactly right, but anyway, everything had to be sent to the region board FEMA office in Atlanta and close it out. So, I, I don't know what is, is holding them up and doing that, but the state cannot pay us their part, which was, you know, half of the match basically, twelve point five percent of the total disaster. They can't pay us their part until FEMA finalizes everything and closes it out.
Are we getting some kind of update on why we're not getting the money?
Well, there's, you know, personnel with the state EMA that have been helping us, you know, communicate with FEMA, and they just haven't gotten a good answer. The answer is, they're just not done closing that yet. So, yeah, it's, it's been frustrating, but anyway, when we do get paid for that, that final payment, it's more than enough to cover these invoices, but... And my, my recommendation is based on, you know, being that it has been so long, this is basically like an interest free loan from the state, you know, on, on these projects. And being that it has been so long, my recommendation is go ahead and pay it, since there is plenty of money in lodging tax for that, but of course, that's just my recommendation.
Would it be acceptable, I'm not sure, just asking, us asking McKinsey as a group, given none of the legalities big that I know, when we had some holdups, that we could have good answers on the PDA loan for the repaving of the old two thirty-one. Somebody from Senator Shelby's office reached out to the, at office in Atlanta. I mean, I wondered, asking McKinsey to reach out to somebody from Senator Tuberville's office to just try to at least spur up an answer. And if we're in our everything, would be suitable, but we don't know, you know, we've got, we've got, we've got some resolution to something that's been out six years now.
Yeah, I've been over there one time.
Yes, sir.
You fell off Senator Kirby, you know, I don't think I'm on the job first, man, just before when you, Senator Kirby, I mean, that was, um, and I knew it was a cross section where they were, and I was trying to contact him.
That will since, that will be a maze, that'll be a deal.
I agree with you. I guess that was the tone of my question. We don't want to, Aldot's helped us, and I'm not saying that, and you've got that relationship, and we don't want to saw our relationships over something they've been helping us on, and we turn around and, and, you know, don't do what we're supposed to do. But you've got to help us to understand some of that, and if, you know what I mean? I mean, if they're expecting, hey, we've been holding this for you, in other words, it was, we're holding it for you, instead of, hey, we just haven't got our stuff together. Don't let us get our, say it's crossed up, Aldot not understanding the gist of what's going on, but...
I think they've been good to us. I mean, they, they gave a big warning over a year ago, that we were about to find out. You know what I mean?
And I know you've been saying...
They gave a lot of time to us after they gave us that final warning. And these invoices are almost out of date too. We, I hadn't been trying to sit on them, but once we got them, they actually came to McKinsey first, and so we, we began the process of digging in and going through and dealing, you know, several people at Aldot to check them and make sure everything's right and all that, before we came and presumed we were gone. So, I think the invoices themselves are a thirty day ahead type of invoice, I think. So, I guess the question is, Ben, we're going to reach out to Senator Tuberville's office. The question is, you want to go ahead and pay this now, and hopefully get a faster return by reaching out, or just sit on it till your next meeting?
How long, how long is that, they've been waiting on it? I can't hear from both of them. We need to start talking right.
Well, the...
Pull that microphone up.
The invoices have, are there a month over?
It's probably, it's probably around now.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but they're about a month. Like I said, we've been working on checking, it was a pretty complex process just to check those invoices, but we've been working on that, and that's the reason why we need to bring them right in. Of course, you put it on, then we're leading ahead of them or whatever now, but anyway, Mr. Johnson answered your question. Like I said, they, the invoices themselves, we've had for about a month, but it's been years, you know, since the projects were closed out and on our end, you know, local level. And they gave us, they gave us a warning shot about a year ago.
Well, it's new business to us today, so let's carry it to the next meeting and see if we can get some kind of an answer.
Well, I will call someone to Aldot and explain to them what we're doing and why we're paying this, if they will get it.
Right. The worst thing we can wait is two more weeks to get an answer from them.
Okay. All right. Um, the next item we have on the agenda is the private water lines and dirt roads. I believe Mr. Johnson requested for us to start by working on that issue. The issue, just to reiterate the issue, we have several, they're usually dead end dirt roads. We have several roads around the county where the county water authority or any other utility, nobody has an actual water line, public water line, you know, along the road for access. And so, what the citizens do is they put a meter maybe at the closest intersection at the end of the road, and then run their private line down the middle of the dirt road. And this is a practice that has happened for many years. So, on some of these, there are real problems, those water lines were in most cases not placed properly, they're too shallow, you know, we hit them with grater blades, they, and, you know, a lot, some of them may have been placed almost properly, deep enough, but over time, due to erosion and whatnot, could have gotten reduced amount of cover on them. But anyway, when they break, obviously they cause a problem in our roads, and they're just a headache for us, really. And so, I think Mr. Johnson's started this conversation several years ago about, I think he had some heartburn, I'm trying to speak for you, but some issues in his district about this regarding just involving some of these water lines, so...
And we, and we've had some roads we couldn't properly work.
That's right.
With anything other than the grater blade because of prairie water.
That's right. We can't get in there and pull the ditches and, you know, shape it and do the proper grading we need to do because of private water lines anyway. So, anyway, I think the question now is, we did a large project to go in and run county water authority or some other utility. Some of our, some of the, some of our roads are not in the county water authority's area, that's what I mean. Some of them are in, for example, pine level water, or on some water lines on our roads, so... But anyway, we could go in and install a proper water line down this road, one of these roads, just like, and eliminate all of the little private lines through there, you know. But obviously, there's a lot of health associated with it.
What do you think, Bert, with how much of that just...
Well, so far, what I've got, what I've provided to you tonight is this list that I handed out. These are, this may not be an exhaustive list, but these are the roads that we know of, that give us problems. And there may be some other ones that have never given us a problem, and all of a sudden, they may start giving us a problem. But I want you to think this is a complete and total list, but this is just, you know, I feel confident that it's a vast majority of them, it's all the ones we know about. And there's told about almost twenty seven miles of these roads and have these private water lines.
Is this just road miles, or do you know there's water lines on all of these, like...
Yeah, this, this is centerline road miles.
So, the water lines probably won't be twenty seven miles?
Probably not. Yeah, we tried to, I think when, when we did this spreadsheet, we tried to locate the last box under our last residence on the road, and I'm going to use that link instead of what's in our system in the road. Yeah, this, this is just a, like I said, it's a rough approximation. The list is probably not even complete, the mileage is probably not even complete, and, but we wanted, just wanted to give you the best approximation we could of what we have out there, and that's what's represented here on this list. We've reached out to the water authority, and they're helping us try to come up with a cost estimate to replace the, run these new lines and then give them these private water lines. But the, when I talked to them today, they, they still don't have a complete replacement estimate for us, but they did tell me that the pipe alone is going to be about three dollars a foot. So, if you just do a quick calculation, there's a hundred and forty thousand feet, linear feet, or linear meters, that's looking at four hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so, just from the material, just with the pipe. So, they've been, obviously, they'll be...
Trench and restoration be about thirty five dollars a foot?
Well, that, I mean, that's, I was kind of thinking somewhere along the lines of double the, the material price there, but, so yeah, I mean, you might, you might think three quarters of a million to a million dollars, somewhere in that range when it's all said and done.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who do you anticipate doing the work? Would it be Pike County Road Department, or are we looking at Pike County Water to do the actual work?
Well, it, it would be either Pike County Water Authority or another utility, if it's in someone else, the road is in someone else's region, or it would be by contract. And the water authority told me that, you know, right now, if we asked them to do a bunch of these, they would not be able to do it, they would have to be contracted. But I asked them, well, you know, what if we just could spread this out over a few years and prioritize them, get the worst ones first, the most problematic ones first, and, and do it slowly like that, and, and they told me that that might be difficult. And so, I, and I don't know, you might say get it done by contract, cheaper, I really don't know. Wish a couple of them know more about that than I do.
These are all private lines?
They're...
These are all private lines?
Yeah.
Strictly private lines?
Yes, these road miles are, they represent roads where we have the private water lines.
What is the road number for the dirt road between, on the west end, between eleven twenty eight and Oak Grove Road?
That is, um...
Eleven something, is it?
I think you're talking about...
No, it's not fifty, you know, eleven fifty one.
That's a three road, it is eleven...
I mean, the reason I ask that, I know that one road has seven private water lines. And the conversation was, not long ago, if somebody wanted to build a house or put a mobile home on that road, they couldn't, because nobody knows where to dig a trench to lay another private water line. You want to say, I mean, it's, it's not just the issue for him managing a road, this is an inhibitor in a lot of ways to any future residential growth happening on this twenty seven mile road in a lot of ways.
And that, that's eleven sixteen, I think.
Eleven sixteen, see, it's not even on this list.
If that's the right one you're talking about, it's, well, like I said, I mean, they're probably the other roads too, so...
Yes, I'm like, yes.
And I don't know how, I don't know how to, I mean, we don't have any...
Sir? If we go through and we put these new packs down, are we going back with the same pack, or move up to a bigger pack so they can put fire hydrants in? Because just a water faucet there, they could work on before building a sixty five thousand dollar house, and they got no water pressure to do nothing with. Well, that costs them a lot of money for their shelter, on kind of pack of water lines and that and that too.
Well, the, the idea is to use a three inch line, I think that's normally the standard in an area like that. The lines that are there are usually like this one inch line, surface line, and so they'll be eliminated and replaced with one three inch line.
Yep.
That's not a bad point, if there's two or three or four of these roads that are more densely populated than something like the Skino Dirt Road, if there may be two water line, two, you want to make.
Right.
That may not, that may be a good talking point as to, hey, if we upgraded on these three spots, and like on the Winger Road where we've had so many issues trying to keep gravel and stuff, with that stretch of road so built up, you know, there may be some instances like that, that we could look at maybe getting the price on a little bit larger line that would support a fire hydrant, because that's in turn going to help the volunteers, you want to make. I mean, you're going to be statistically a lot more likely to need a fire hydrant on a dirt road that's got thirty residences than one that's got two.
Well, any, anything that's partnered with the water authority, I, I know there's some limitations what they can do on some of these smaller lines. We actually talked about it the other night at the Fire Association meeting, but if we're partnering any way, well, we're probably going to want to work with David and Mr. Herb and them, try to figure out, if you can't put it on a three inch line, hey, we're helping you the best here, so put a hydrant out here, close where the tankers have got somewhere to go.
Just another five mile town road.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, this, this is, this, a program like this, if you could use that new money, or, you know, would you be an opportunity to fill more than one bird with, with the storm? But here, I think there's another...
A few years back, on Gray's Road, they was having this problem, like you're talking about. They had a problem of like, between five and six in the morning, they had to, they couldn't even take a shower. So, Joe Bloddy, they don't get to take a hill, and, you know, they had to do this out. And Floyd took it on his own, I think he owned that property, whatever it was, and he put that pack from, you know, here, rode all the way back down to Butter Lake Road, you know, a bigger pack, and they had that problem no more. So, we got a lot of folks in the county that deals off the road and house trails and whatever, kind of on the back forty, and if everybody turned the wall on at one time, that's it. And no, that's it, our fire department, we're fine. Matter of fact, far back, they had a fire off, going back towards two twenty, three. The guys had to come all the way up to that little dirt road that comes off of, and go get some water to come back and put them in the house, out, they had a campfire, and then they had to go several miles, go all the way to twenty nine to get some water to go back in there, and they had a pool in the backyard, and on the water, you couldn't pump the water out of that thing. But the man from the college drove out there for the fire department guy out there, and he was able to get his car out, might have seen a lot of that crap. So, when we start dealing with dealing with housing and tele posts, you know, water lines are, this is, this stopped for about five hours on one, that was on one, you know, one meter.
Well, that, I mean, yeah, some of the issues possibly dealt with, we had funding to do something like this, you know, on with, I don't know, that'd be a question for the water authority, but I'm thinking pretty possible. But another question that I, I'll mention this before we move on, another question that
Troy Cable Security makes it easy to stay aware and stay in control of your home wherever you are. User-friendly interface allows easy navigation for lights, locks thermostat, video and garage doors. Never worry about leaving your garage door open or the front door unlocked. Your mobile app can send alerts to your phone for alarm and no alarm events. Know when your children arrive home from school with video response.
The saddle business we received was a good bit higher than our project cost estimate, so, right now, we're in talks with the state, with Aldot and with FSWA to try to get approval for an increase in funding on the kind of projects. We wouldn't be able to get it worked tonight anyway, because it's not been authorized yet by federal level institutions. But that process is moving along, they're working on that concurrently with us trying to make it work, so we'll bring that back to you in a few minutes.
For y'all's information, it's not an insignificant amount of increase, it's a quarter million or so.
Quite a bit.
As long as those people would have been without a bridge, a small increase would, you know...
That would, it's, it's enough money that we don't want to have to cover it ourselves.
Is there any more info on the driveway pumps?
Yes, sir, that's coming up next, is the, the new proposed driveway pump. There's no new information on it, it's just the same exact information that I've provided to you at your last meeting.
This would be available to use the plastic piping?
Yes, sir, it would be the double wall HDP pipe.
Is there any local vendor that sells that?
Yes, sir, a lot of those companies do. They, I, I reached out to them, and they keep twenty foot sections in stock, our requirement is minimum thirty, and I was told that they would be willing to keep thirty foot pieces in stock if we, y'all changing policies, but that's, would be a better material availability for the citizens, is another benefit.
Quite cost efficient too, versus what the other ones are.
Oh, it's a huge offset. Plastic, plastic has gone up as well, but steel prices have just gone with the route lately.
I don't see no reason not to vote on that tonight, everybody's ready.
That's the only thing that changes, is that you...
Yeah.
...double wall.
The plastic, yeah, like...
Okay. What else?
Um, that's all. We, we have equipment on there, but we're not having anything...
Okay. All right. Anything else for the engineer? Thank you, Russell. EMA, Mr. Herb? Any questions for Mr. Herb? Okay, E911, Doug?
You should have all received a, a letter from me and a letter from Chief Marquez James, resigning from the nine one board. So, the letter that I, I intend to give is just requesting a replacement. That position is generally a run ditch position traditionally, due to whoever you want in the area. We're not going to write anything. But Mr. James's request was that the city manager would be right to give his replacement, that you don't have to take action tonight, that your rules want you to take action the next one.
Right.
You know, we're capable of doing business with six members, that's, that's all that you're going to have.
Are you going to have a board meeting before the next meeting of ours?
Yeah, we got a board meeting.
Is there a reason for us not to vote, Mr. Wright?
Yes, we want...
We'll take, we'll, we'll do the suspended rule, but we'll do that tonight. And he's willing to talk with you?
I have not had some time yet, but...
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Pearson, are you over there?
He's here, and I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Well, if that's what you like, then that's what we'll do.
The other thing I am, I know addresses and what goes on with addresses are a, a source of talk to the citizens for y'all. I am building a notification list to notify post office, branch office, stuff like that by zip code, and if any of you want to receive those notifications on addresses or issue or change or anything like that for the zip codes in your districts, if you're in Allen, you have to do a, add all two of those, and get that, get that set up. Just let me know, I'll add two of those. And then, that's all of that. When, if any of you are going to the ACCA conference in August, the I-11 group is going to have a co-conference down there at the same time, so, what do you say? Way back. We'll be having that on our beach too.